...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
We'll start off, we'll get this agenda approved with one change, we're going to drop that DD number thirty-three payment. That needs to be done at a later date, so we need to make a correction to the agenda.
I'll approve the agenda.
So minus that?
Minus that, yeah.
Minus that.
Okay, have a first?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approve the minutes from eight fourteen.
Okay, uh, what's over everything, it seems to be in order, I approve the, make a motion to approve the minutes from the fourteenth of August.
Second.
Second by Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. General public concerns. All righty. We're gonna move on to John.
This will probably be a series of never-ending Title VI requests from me, um, when you all made me the Title VI compliance officer for Humboldt.
You volunteered.
I don't know that I necessarily volunteered, but I don't think I had much of a choice.
You want these to look at what you're doing?
No, I know what, I know what they are. Back in two thousand thirteen, um, I didn't realize it was gonna be this much work, so, today's really simple, today is just basically what we've done for Title VI in Humboldt the past couple of years, and, um, a plan that we've approved once, but we're gonna need to approve every year as we change the chairman of the board supervisors, so every year I will now be coming to you, asking you to sign what you signed two weeks ago, and then what you're signing today. We are working on a limited English proficiency plan, as well as adding something to the agenda to allow for accommodations for people who maybe wouldn't attend meetings, or don't attend meetings because, you know, they don't speak English, can't hear, or have some barrier to coming here. So, I would be the person that they would contact and make arrangements, we're also going to look at posting the agenda, especially when we have any kind of federal-funded project for secondary roads, posting that agenda down at the grocery store on Sumner, and possibly in what used to be Lomita's, but I cannot remember what its new name is, so we can provide notice to people that maybe wouldn't come, or don't see it, as well as posting our Title VI policies on the website. This is not for today, we also need an ADA compliance director, I'm assuming that's gonna end up being me, too. All the courthouses ADA compliant, Sheriff's Department of Law and Order Center is ADA compliant, Mert's Management is ADA compliant, but we don't have any place for anybody to go if there's a problem, or a complaint, or a concern, or even just a simple request. Normally we send all of the requests that nobody's real sure what to do with to Peggy, um, but, but this probably would be better suited to be, to me, it's, none of this seems to be a big deal, it's just, Title VI is an anti-discrimination requirement that we not discriminate based on race, age, sex, color, so, the ADA of the American Disabilities Act, which this building being built forty, fifty years from its past, updates have made compliance, which is good, and I think the county buildings are all compliant, but it's hopefully to allow more access to people, if people don't know where to go to ask, or people just don't come because they don't think they can get into the courthouse, or they don't understand what's going on at the meeting, we'll take care of that. This mainly affects treasurer's office because they give driver's licenses and secondary roads because they get federal funding for roads. It's a lot longer than I missed it all.
Okay. Make it nice and clear. Kind of.
Be more clarification on that at this point in time, or?
No, I don't think so.
So we're authorizing you to sign this?
Yes.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, we, we are dealing with DOT when this, so this goes to the DOT. I, I did all this, I signed them, and, 'cause I thought it was for the compliance officer to sign, it's for me and for the chairman of the board of supervisors to sign, so every year we'll be back with-
Every year we gotta re-sign it?
Everything, yeah, two things to re-sign.
Okay.
I don't think the policies will change, I don't plan to change them.
Probably not. Well, I've made the motion to approve, place on file Title VI disclosures and Title VI assurances, and request the chairman to sign both.
All righty.
Second.
Yeah, first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, I will sign.
Thank you very much.
John, just a question on this one, I'm assuming Rick signs as the respondent then?
He signs as administration head, administrative head, sorry.
Okay.
I'm the respondent.
Because on this sheet, I think it looks, he was the respondent, unless I'm looking at it different.
Yes, I'm the respondent, he's the administrative head.
Okay.
I tried to sign for you, Rick, but I didn't count.
You're the top dog on all the federal aid, uh, schools?
Not the school, no, no, just-
The Title VI compliance officer you are.
Oh, no, no, I don't do the schools. I don't have anything to do with the schools or the hospital.
I would just have to send these for us, and then send them up to you so that you can, I don't know if you're sending them, try to get them back to DOT.
Yeah, I'll send them in, yes, that would be great, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Federalize, you're a federal law officer, tell me, you like to tell me that, you have not sent out the schools, and it's not the hospital, the hospital finally stopped all the cases, or, they thought I was their lawyer when I started, I'm not their lawyer.
Okay, Paul, you're up.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
Good morning, I have a long list that is probably not too bad, several items, uh, the public hearing isn't slated till eight forty-five, so let's move on to the second item, approve federal aid agreement for county highway bridge program project for bridge replacement on Truemer Creek along C-20, along the North Line six and twenty-four, Delena, project number BRS, county forty-six, parent seventy, sixty, forty-six. This is a bridge on, on C-20 west of Livermore, um, we have federal aid requests for it, we're planning on trying to let it, um, march, is what our target is, um, and we're looking at, uh, bridge to box, probably double box, it looks like twelve by twelve, or twelve by ten. Any other questions?
So, whatever size boxes, two boxes?
Yeah, it'd be double box, if it's a box in lieu of bridge, yeah. This just is the federal aid agreement that says that, uh, we're requesting eighty percent funds on it, and that we meet the federal guidelines if we, if we take it.
Is that, will they pay for the boxes as well?
They'll pay eighty percent of the construction cost.
Well, whichever-
But whatever we get approved through the DOT, and bid through the DOT.
Has the box thought process been engineered, quote unquote?
Uh, preliminarily.
Okay, I guess, you know, curious, the amount of water that can go through that bridge, as is, if boxes are adequate, but, we're not deciding on that at this point.
No. We have the costs in for box, we don't have a cost in for bridge.
But the, the funding part of this is fine, either direction.
If we, if we need more funding than what we have in here budgeted and on this agreement, then we, uh, have to do amendments, but we still would get eighty percent of, uh, BR, it's a BR eligible structure, so we would get eighty percent funding on it, um, and subject to, uh, whatever we had a budgeted for it, uh, and then if it goes extremely above that, then we have to get an amendment to do it. It all comes out of the same pot, we have a BR fund, and we have so much money countywide, so the, the money would, if we spent more money on this structure-
Be less for somewhere else.
Less for somewhere else, if it's less for this, it's, allows more for somewhere else.
For the county money, but this is asking for the state?
The federal pot is only has so much money, and it's up to the counties on how we spend it. I'm gonna recommend to the board that we sign an agreement here based on a double box to replace this bridge.
And then I say again, I'm, you know, we're not set on, in stone, quote unquote, this concrete, that it is a double box, and I, I just, you know, are we still exploring that it is gonna be that, or it could be, you know, could or should be a bridge, or something?
My expectation is that it'll be a double box, and based on what we've looked at, it could be a twelve by ten, but will probably be twin twelve by twelves. The low concrete will be similar to what it is now, it'll be higher than the bridge downstream from it, and its, uh, flow rates through the box are, uh, velocities are low enough, I'm not too worried about it, a double box is more inadequate. Three miles upstream on a narrow drainage area, we have a twin fourteen, or, we have a single fourteen by fourteen by Cliff Allen's we just put in.
Right.
And we don't gain a lot of area from there down, so, 'cause it's a narrow, we have bloody run to the south watershed, and, uh, to the north is, uh, Lots Creek, pretty close, so it's kind of a narrow bend heading clear up toward west bend right there on Truemer, this as, is, as you know, right near the mouth of Truemer Creek.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, it is, isn't it?
But given, you know, and there again, I'm not speaking as, knowing flow rates, engineering specs, all that stuff, but-
I think it's the bridge that's in there now.
Uh, the waterway opening, I wanna say is thirty-eight feet above Muntomuk, I don't recall that here, it's a bridge, it's a steel-beam bridge right now.
And obviously, we know from previous discussion, it's old and, like all, a lot of bridges, and the replacement part of it, the funding part's great, I just, you know, hopeful, there, yeah, it's, like Paul said, it's at the bout where it empties into Lots Creek, uh, so obviously it's the bottom end of whatever flow is in the creek at any given time, uh, I don't wanna, you know, it's not gonna create a dam, obviously, but hopefully it's adequate to, it can flood, you know, like everybody's can flood, uh, we don't wanna get that worse than what it is. Not saying it would be, but just a, just a slight concern, it's why I'd like to bring that up, but-
Well, we're in the design phase, and, and at some point it appears that we need to get approval, uh, before we get all the way down the road on this, and so-
Well, one way you have, uh, if you're in the design phase, one way you have a more definitive, you know, with all the things you threw out there, idea?
Well, preliminary plans have to be submitted soon, um, final plans would be for March letting, it'd be the first week in December, so-
Then you gotta-
So it, it's coming right up on preliminary plans, and I know Ben's done with the survey, we looked at hydraulics last week, we have not submitted hydraulics, uh, we don't need any right-of-way on this one, so we don't have to go through that hurdle, so, uh, so it, it looks pretty clean at this point.
So you're talking fairly near future, so the preliminary stuff would be final, the, yep, this is, this is gonna work just fine, as far as the-
Yeah, I mean, we did, yeah. I don't have, I don't have any, uh, reservations on a bridge to box here, um, I think the box at a twin twelve by twelve is, uh, by the numbers I saw last week, again, uh, I don't think I have a problem recommending that.
And, not putting the cart before the horse, or jumping to conclusions, but the putting box significantly less money than a bridge?
Yeah, I mean, we're, uh, we have a budget of two hundred and seventy-four thousand here on this, and, um, you saw where we're at with bridges, uh, we were this year at three sixty or seventy for, uh, for what, eighty foot or?
Quite a bit less money.
Well, I would say go ahead, make a motion, or react?
No.
Approved the aid agreement for highway, county highway bridge program project.
I would make a motion to do so, then.
I'll second the motion.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I think we can, Mr. Chair, if we would open up the hearing?
Okay, we need a motion, uh, open up the public hearing for the roadway culvert across County K, about seven hundred and fifty feet south of Highway three.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second that. Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we now have opened up the public hearing. Anyone here from the public wish to speak about the subject matter?
Ray, on K Road, or the culvert on K Road?
I can, you want me to describe?
What, what we're proposing to do is, uh, on K Road extension, uh, into Dakota City, a joint project where we're gonna try to widen shoulders, uh, and probably try to get an overlay on it, yet one lift on it, uh, this fall, possibly, and when we started looking at that, uh, we decided that it would be a good time to cut in a pipe, uh, we've had several times where we've had water overflow at the road at this location because there is no cross pipe, even though it's the natural course, the only drainage at this point has been an intake, uh, drainage structure under the road is an intake on the west side, and if the intake is maintained, and we don't get a six-inch rain, we're fine, if the intake gets covered with debris, then we have it over the top of the road. And as we get more and more development of everything north here, it gets worse and worse because we have more roofs and, roofs and, uh, parking lots, so, that's why now appeared to be a good time, and just like anybody else, if we want to cross the road, uh, we need to have a hearing to have all those potentially impacted, uh, to have their voice heard, even though this is the natural water course, when it overtops the road, it runs the same path, we are, even secondary roads and Dakota City required to have a hearing before we can do this. Thus, we're here.
I'll make of a culvert?
I think we're gonna, uh, be probably in the thirty-six inch range, while we're there, thirty or twenty-four is probably good enough, but while we have it open road, and we don't know what the next fifty years is gonna be here, we'll probably bump it up to thirty-six. It's gonna go more or less from right of, right-of-way to right-of-way with flared ends on it, we'll tie it, put it back. One of the two, thirty or thirty-six, but we're gonna bump it from the design size and go from there.
Does this work to do yourself?
I think we're gonna try to do it jointly with the city, Dakota City.
Okay. Okay. All righty, uh, no one here from the public, wanna, anyone wish to speak? All righty.
What is your answer?
Second that. First and second, close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, public hearing's now closed. Okay, now we gotta approve plans and specs and set bid letting for C-49 resurfacing, project LB nineteen dash one.
Um, yeah, it is, nineteen dash one, I was thinking you were reading sixty-nine. What we have is a project that we're gonna advance in our construction phase, we're bidding it now, uh, at the time we talked about this, we had contractors that might be interested for fall work, I don't know if that's still the case at this point, although with this project, there is, uh, four culverts underneath C-49, uh, that will be replaced, and it's possible that they may try to do those this fall, uh, I don't know what they'd try to do this fall, but we're proposing to lay it out there for the contractors to determine what they wanna do and when they wanna do it. We have several, a couple different contractors in the area with plans either now or in the near future, so they'll already be set up with the plants, and, uh, they're eager to bid something like this, so we're trying to get the plans out there earlier than later. Uh, these, this again would be a five-inch white top from Highway one sixty-nine to the county line in Poki, approximately eleven miles long, um, we're giving them fifty working days, the late start date would be next, uh, August sixth of two thousand eighteen, to give them plenty of time, if they, uh, wanna do it now, or do it right off the bat in the spring, uh, it's, uh, it's nice, uh, they can do the survey, they can do whatever, and get, uh, the profile all ready to go for next spring, if they want to do it then, so, yeah, contractor interest, thus we're trying to get it up to see where we're at, and, and get it bid and let, we're proposing a letting September thirteenth at ten o'clock here in the morning.
You talk about wanting to cross the line?
Yes, we're, we're gonna shoot, uh, what is it, minus, uh, three hundred and twenty-three feet, well, three hundred and twenty feet, twenty-three feet on the west end of Pocahontas County, we're gonna start, over the years, both counties have come up to the line, and neither has done the intersection itself, we only have six inches of asphalt there, so we will be a full-depth PC there of five inches, uh, the majority of this road, we're gonna mill two inches out and put five back in, so we'll only be three inches higher, but a few select locations, like on the Tinkin' School Corner, or, for those of us that don't know, Tinkin' School Corner, it's P-29 and C-49, it's gonna be full depth through that intersection, and actually eight inches over the box culvert that we're replacing just west of the intersection, and then we'll taper back down into a milled section with five inches of concrete. Same thing at the railroad tracks, the fire cab is budding into the railroad tracks with asphalt patches on either side, or approaches as required by the railroad, but just like the other projects, the local railroad authorities have assured us they wanna raise the track as much as five inches, if they do indeed raise the track five inches, we will just pull the milling out and, and bring the concrete up, 'cause the crossing is low, both the road and the railroad are low at that point, so we'll raise everything and, and shoot through it at a level, uh, level path there, so-
Yeah, that, having them raise that track if they slip the nun, what time do you hurt?
No, what they would do is they'd move in when the roads close, and that's what they've done on these, or they did, they raised Addison when we were closed this summer, they raised Laverne, or, excuse me, Hardy when we had that closed a year ago.
Oh, so they did work with you on that?
They wanna, they want the opportunity to get the crossing as high as possible, and that's how they can, uh, do that, but at this point, we're here to accept the plans and set a date, uh, for letting, uh, but that's, right now, we're planning to match what's there, but our expectation is that the road would raise grade, uh, through it, you know?
Okay.
Well, let's hope they do, I would make a motion to approve the plans, specifications, and do we have a bid letting, uh, date then?
September thirteenth.
September thirteenth.
At ten o'clock.
Make a motion for all of that.
I'll second that.
Now the first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, voucher number four to Heartland.
The first is just the local, that is approved, the voucher, this is, uh, the Laverne South paving, and what we've got finally is our change orders back from the DOT that we approved a couple of weeks ago for smoothing this incentive, and this reflects the forty-two-hundred dollars and thirty-seven cents, uh, excuse me, four thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and two cents incentive, uh, and that's the only thing that shows up on this voucher, less retention.
Okay. Do they get a motion to approve?
Second.
First and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The last one is three vouchers, then approved units completed on following vouchers to Heartland Inc. for the two thousand seventeen resurfacing, these are the three additional, uh, farm-to-market projects paid through the farm-to-market, uh, through the DOT, and their parents sixty-two, sixty-three, and sixty-five, all of them reflect the extra work orders that we approved a couple of weeks ago, we submit them to the DOT, they finally got them back, and, and into their voucher form, so we'd approved the units complete, and the only thing that's changed is the extra work orders that were previously approved.
Make a motion.
That's a forty-one oh nine, twenty-three sixty-three, twenty-nine twelve, way, reading that right?
Um, yeah, and that's what the dollars boil out to, uh, and, and again, it's the units, uh, it would be one unit, uh, the only change is the extra work order, they, the DOT calculates the actual dollars in a sense, and with rounding errors, we can be a penny off here and there, uh, but, uh, yes, it's the twenty, it amounts to twenty-three-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars and seventy-six for parent sixty-two, sixty-three is twenty-nine hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-three cents, that's parent sixty-three, and parent sixty-five is fifty-six twenty-eight oh nine, five thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and nine cents, and that's by our rounding, and, and actually, uh, the only rounding that counts is the DOT's at this point, so.
Make a motion to approve the voucher.
First.
Second that.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Um, that's it, um, I would like some discussion, and not now, but we need to order spray if we're gonna continue what we've established in the past for policy, and that's spray on demand, on complaints, and spray in the fall, and we have been spraying in the fall with a dicamba product, uh, mainly geared toward the uptake of nutrients, and they uptake the spray and kill the thistle root system, uh, and that's what we've done in the fall. If we're not gonna continue that, we don't need to, or if we need a different project or something else, I need some feedback.
I think we need to have a little discussion on that at some point.
But it's time to order.
Yeah.
Anyway, I'll, that's later, or after, or whatever you tell me. Week commissioners, you tell us what you want us to do, and we do it, and we have a blessed official copy, uh, of last week's annual report from the DOT, and thus I'm giving you the final version, if you'd file it in the, in the, otherwise I-
The other one was actually official, too, wasn't it?
Well, it was official from this end.
They had to sign off, they had to sign off.
And they had, they all got rid of the watermark on it that you saw, that does not exist anymore for any future counties, they decided that, what's the point? We have a few of our blocks in, one load to Hardy, and we set up one load, I think we'll end up with another load coming this morning, and we have, uh, John Zag is hauling them in, and they're hauling them in whenever the concrete company can load them.
All right.
Thank you, Paul.
Good. I have, uh, all of these need signatures, and I'm just gonna leave it all for you somewhere.
Yeah.
'Cause we need auditor signatures on the notices, and then, uh, yeah, yeah, maybe it won't get law.
Yeah. All righty.
Make a motion to doing drainage.
Second that. First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're in. Packed out.
Nice to see everybody here.
All right.
Very good.
Did it rain last night?
A little bit.
Yeah?
Four cents.
Was it?
Yeah. Quite right, 'cause every time it rains, four cents to our place, it rains against about one.
Yeah, it's amazing, it's just, no, it's a pagan, you know the story.
Yeah, I was, I'm looking at my pointer, a couple days ago.
It's pagan, but-
Yeah, it's, we've been waiting here, we've been waiting for it.
That's it. It's gonna be real hit mess, it's a real hit mess this year, the rain has been extremely spotty.
It's amazing how you get a little rain that long greened up, isn't it?
Yeah.
So we're waiting on Rick, and Dr. Shetland?
Yeah.
Address coming first.
We're actually on time, that's surprising.
Actually on time, oh yeah, well, cut them off before we shoot for, yeah. We'll have that 15-minute grace period.
Yeah, we're short two today.
Oh, boy. Lots of stuff too.
You ready?
Ready.
All righty, we're going to start with DD 11 sub 5. We've got the preliminary engineering report hearing, continue.
Most of you have heard discussion on this already. We filed a report for following the old route of the tile system. Came up a sizing for one inch drainage coefficient. The report, I think it ended up about $1.2 million total. Since then, this hearing was continued. There was private study done looking at taking the tile water to the northeast to sub 1 of 11. That was private study. After that was submitted, I did a quick estimate if it was done as a county system. And I believe I came up with $778,000 going that route. Now.
Verification, so you did engineering, little different on the same proposed private?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I looked at concrete pipe going northeast. I think that one was just a half inch drainage coefficient, if I'm not mistaken, so.
Did you need a half inch coefficient then with your, you know, additions, corrections?
Yeah, and now this was just something I did real quick.
Right.
It's not an official submittal by any means.
Gives us a rough idea.
Yeah, yeah, rough idea.
But it was meant to follow the private proposal based on that it would be a county or a drainage district.
There you go, yes, yes. And whether that stays private or goes as a county project, you'd still have to have hearings on annexation. All the property in question is in Drainage District 11, but you'd be taking some of sub 5's water to sub 1. So I know that there's been another engineer that has looked at the effects of that. I don't, I'm not sure who worked with them to get that. So that's been looked at. We looked at that pipe. It was brought up that we looked at one of those pipes some time ago. Well, I didn't look back far enough to start with. It was in 1996, so.
This is the pipe under the road.
Yes, pipe under the road. Where the east-west ditch comes into the north-south ditch, there's a pipe just a short distance towards the main open ditch that we looked at in 1996. So I guess, you know, it's a little uncertain what's going to happen from this point on. And I, I'm not sure how you had left this. I had it in my head that you had another hearing already set for this one, but what it looks like may have happened is that we're submitting the reclassification for sub 5, for DD 11, including sub 5, which gets the tile drainage separate from the open ditch drainage because under the current classification, even the people on the open ditch needed to get notice and have a say in remonstrance. So I believe what should happen, we'll be submitting, well, I gave it to Trish already, the new reclassification that separates the tile and the ditch so that if you schedule a hearing for the reclass and continue this hearing till an hour afterwards or whatever, the new reclass will be in effect and just the people on the tile would have a say in remonstrance. And I think that's important because the people on the ditch will not be paying, but yet they needed to get a notice because it hadn't been separated before. So I think that's going to be an important step to take. That's it in a nutshell. Either way, if, whether you go east and do privately or as a drainage district, there'll need to be annexation. It's, all the procedures spell out if you do it as a county, it's a little gray yet if you do it privately on how you'd handle that, but as a private project, they'd still have to seek approval to dump their water into that stub ditch, that east-west ditch. So there's still some hurdles to cross, however that one is handled. Yeah, with either, either option, we're paralleling the existing tile system. It's just with the report we submitted originally, we're taking it north into the main or into the sub 5 open ditch, and then with the one that goes northeast, that's taking it into sub 1 of 11 open ditch. Yeah, that's, that's it in a nutshell. I don't know how detailed you want to get, but that's the main issues we need to deal with.
A pretty darn good overview, given the complexity.
It's very, this, this one, yes, it's a good-sized project dollar-wise, but it's, it's got about all the complexities you want to deal with in a project, so.
Complexities meaning what?
Well, you got, which way do you go with the drainage? You have an annexation, you needed.
Between the two.
Between the two, yeah. You needed a reclassification, get the tile separated, yeah, those kinds of things, yeah, not, yeah, yep. Yeah, more questions, landowner questions?
Well, also in conjunction with all that, and that is a pretty good description of quite a, quite a project. So right now, are we looking at the reclassification report?
Yeah, I submitted it to Trish just earlier. I met with the commissioners late last week. We reviewed what had been done before. We had separated then and added a main tile of sub 5 section to the report. Went over it with the commissioners, they agreed with how we split it, and they signed the reports late last week. I brought them back to officially file today. Now, good news or whatever is that the draft that you have seen, and I think some landowners have seen how this cost would be split, that was, that didn't change. So the people on the tile will be paying at least very close to what we have on the draft one we distributed.
Really? And that was done before the reclassification?
Yes, yes.
So you're saying the numbers did not really change?
Right, correct, correct. Yeah, just, we use the same thing, soils and proximity and things like that, so.
Yeah, because the people on ditch aren't paying anyway, so.
That's right.
The numbers don't change.
That's right, exactly, yeah.
You're just separating them.
Exactly, yeah. We separated them as best we could as this project was developing to give people an idea what they'd be paying, but the, a new reclass had not been submitted to separate the tile from the open ditch part yet, and that's the step we needed to take to get the right people having the right of remonstrance.
Which you've done.
Yes.
Which we have to accept, and it says set hearing date.
Yes.
We had discussion on this not too long ago. Does that push that out then 40 days from now to make the reclassification official?
Yes. Yeah.
One question I have is what is the engineering spur? How do they feel about the proposed county going north and the proposal going northeast?
Good question. I've not studied it in detail, but we've been involved long enough and know the history and that kind of thing. And I took a quick look at it late last week as far as realistic cost figures, and it appears we can get the same level of drainage going northeast for about $200,000 less. Now, might be more difference than that once you get into it in detail, but I feel pretty comfortable saying that.
Yeah, well, because I can remember, that's been 20-some years ago, we talked about that, and it was just, no, can't get into a different district, you know, with somebody else's water. So we never pursued it after that.
Right.
So I don't know what has changed.
Nothing really, just, it's just as a county project, they can, the board can go through the steps it takes to get that annexation done. One big advantage, if it's done as county, is that the board would be trustees.
Right.
There's means to repair it in the future, there's means to determine who pays what.
I understand that, but the issue that I had, or remember having, it was flat, no, can't do it. Can't get into that other district.
I think what Jeff is asking is what are the steps to go that direction?
Yeah, well, I mean.
Why is it different? Back then it was no, now, now there evidently is something in place.
I'm not sure why it was no exactly, I guess, but the, the first step would be probably a preliminary engineering report to get a better idea, better handle on the costs. And then that report will recommend an annexation procedure, and then that would need to be filed, yeah.
And that's process you got to go through with annexation. You have to go to the landowners in the other district and say, hey.
Yep, yep.
It's a thing, it's still 11, it's just a different suburb you're going to.
Exactly, yes.
But it's basically a different district.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. The water's all the same when you get downstream a little bit in the main ditch, but it takes a different, it has to go through some other.
Well, that's just one question I had.
Sure.
Because it was specific, can't do.
Just no.
So following up, those landowners would, would have a vote to let us in or not?
I'd like to get a legal opinion on that. My, my general knowledge of that is as a district, you can get approval to go that way going through the county, but you'd have to look at the capacities of the system it would go into. And if there's any changes that needed to be made, that'd have to be taken care of.
Would we then be in two districts?
I would say yes, but what, the reclassifications would take care of how that is paid because part of the reclassification would mean that even the people on the tile are benefiting, or on the, on the ditch of sub 5 are benefiting if you take your water east because there's going to be, I think it's 800 and some acres that wouldn't drain through the, their ditch anymore. So there's, the cost would be spread out over more acres going through a county system procedure because of everybody in, nearly everybody in sub 5 of 11 would be benefiting even if you took your water another way because you're taking all those acres off.
I guess what my question is, let's say 25, 30 years down the road, looking ahead.
Yep.
That the northwest ditch or tile needs some work done. Will the people down on the south end, us, still be part of that district and have to pay for part of replacing that tile down there?
You won't, yeah.
That tile is 70 years old.
Yeah, you won't be, well.
You're saying, I understand, right, you're saying yes, but it's going to be a minute amount.
There you go, yes.
The tile is smaller.
Yes, yes.
So tile water's still going that way, but not.
And if they do some improvement downstream from the tile that you, you would be doing as, as going through the other outlet, they wouldn't need near as big a pipe because you've taken 800 acres off of their drainage. So that's where they benefit big time. They'd take much, much smaller pipe to get a good coefficient because of the decrease in acres. So that, this is another complication of this one, and getting those reclassifications done correctly on sub 1 and sub 5, this goes forward.
And then from a county point of view, if that pipe through that road is too small, there was another $80,000 to $100,000 of cost.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Because that pipe cannot handle.
That's what I was worrying, because it's already kind of small now from what I hear from people.
Well, and that's where that really needs to be looked at again, and I'm hoping the report that was done by another firm would be made available for consideration too. Yeah, it's all part of the considerations for this. I know with the private one, there were, there were numbers, costs assigned to each property owner as possible cost share. That would be done by, by the commissioners in a reclassification instead of just privately if it's considered as a county project too. And then you'd have the hearings and all of that that you're required to do and you're all familiar with.
So we're a lot farther out.
Yeah, yeah. I believe that this would be something where if there's a petition to go to the northeast, it wouldn't take us long to put a report together. You'd have the hearing this fall. If it looks like it's going to go forward, it, you'd probably have a January or February bid letting with construction next season. That's the most realistic schedule I can think of at this point.
So Rick, at this point, you've got the reclassification, that's just a splitting of the tile from the ditch. So if it moved forward, then it would be a drainage district project similar to the proposed private project. It would take another reclassification to.
Yes, yes.
To keep that a drainage district project. It would take another reclassification between sub 5 and sub 1.
Correct.
Because of that different direction that the, that the private project takes.
Correct, yes.
And you kind of spoke to that.
But if I'm looking at this in the long run, it's not going to be a lot cheaper by the end when you start throwing everything in it.
Going the other direction.
Going to the northeast.
Well, I think it needs to be looked at and all the landowners need to get a real verification of cost.
Yeah.
You know, to say it may be not going to be the same amount or could be the same amount or might be the same amount. I think you need to, you know, it's been this way for so long up there, whether you wait a little bit longer or not. I just think it's extremely important for my hand that she has all the, you know, the answers that she needs and the verifications that she needs.
And this.
She certainly doesn't want to have, say, wow, it's probably going to cost more or it's probably going to cost less or it could cost more, it could cost less. These are the others.
Well, and that's where a report going that direction would, would try and come up with those costs.
Yeah, but I think that needs to be done.
Yeah, and this board's very good about that.
Yeah.
Getting the facts.
Yeah, and that's the way it needs to be for it.
Yeah. Well, I guess the reclass can be in 40 days or you typically go to six weeks, maybe a Monday. But if there's a petition to look at the, the project going east, it could take us a couple of weeks to put that together, but I think we could do a complete preliminary engineering report in two weeks or less. So I guess what I'm saying is if we anticipate looking to going east, it's probably going to be 40 days plus two weeks before we have the hearing on any new report we submitted. I'm making this too confusing.
No, not really. Jeff brings up an extremely good point to get hard factual numbers. Can you do the preliminary engineering report to the east project that meets all the qualifications and look at that before you determine if you do a reclassification to make that work? For that, putting the garden for the whole?
Well.
Because you said that wouldn't take a lot of times, you know, a lot of that's been looked at already.
Preliminary engineering report would not take long at all.
No, but can you do that to know if it's needing to be or wanting to be moved forward with that project before you determine needing reclassification for the project?
Reclassification for the project can be done. Reclassification for the project can be done. The hangup is, that's some expense that would not be incurred if the project doesn't go forward.
That's, and who pays that?
Yeah.
That's why I'm getting that, where the report is, this is, you know, real close to the correct numbers, to the correct project that goes to the, you know, east. Basically, making a drainage district project based on the private project specifications, but making it correct for drainage district. And then on top of that, you need to make sure that it's all apples to apples, coefficients and all that.
Yes.
So that it is, Jeff mentioned, and you've got the actual comparison numbers, you can look at that. If that is agreeable, then can you move to the reclassification at that point? Because it seems to be, there's no sense to go through the time, the effort, and the money of the reclassification if that project is just gonna be shot down.
Here's what I think we'd come up with if we do a preliminary engineering report with the alternate outlet. I believe we can come up with factors. We'll know very close on the people that are getting the direct benefit of the tile itself. I think we can come up with a factor of, everybody north of there, that we're taking the eight hundred acres off of, how much would theirs be adjusted down? I mean, they're gonna pay something, because we're taking eight hundred acres off. I think we can give, I'll be stamping in a draft, but I think we can get them pretty close.
Well, that gets back to the gist of why this whole private thing got put out there in front of all these good folks and landowners, because it was less money.
Yep.
Total, and less money to the people that weren't directly affected by it. And now we're just taking that, moving it into a drainage district project, to look at it, to get hard and fast numbers.
And here's one thing that came to mind as I was reviewing all this late last week. If we do this as a county project, everybody in sub-five's gonna contribute something.
Right.
When they were doing it privately, it was just the acres that were being drained directly. So that'll help get the average cost down, because there'll be more people paying into the project. And it's those kinds of things that I think are important to know, because will it be such a thing that by doing it as a county, their assessments are lowered considerably, so that it won't cost much more per person than if they'd done it privately? I think, yeah, I think that's what.
And then we go through all the official steps. There's no question of, you know, a landowner not directly affected, but they're still paying, because they're still in the district. What their assessment is, what everyone's assessment is.
I believe this will be one of those projects, like you've done a few times through the years, where we're gonna have a reclassification for this construction, and then at the same time, we'll be filing a reclassification for future maintenance, because the people going the other direction with the outlet now.
Maintenance is different from the construction.
There you go, there you go.
So if they do it privately, or the county can accept it into the district, there still be, might be some cost there, right? And future maintenance and stuff?
Yes, yeah, possible, yeah.
But if the county does it now, and is it all within, you know what it is?
Yes, 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 true.
Well, I think it would be really extremely important if the county be involved with that, but then it takes, would be eastern or northern, I mean, then you guys, the county is the trustee, you know, going forward, you've got.
That's a huge advantage, I think, you have a procedure that you can pull to accomplish things.
And that's very, I think that's extremely important.
Well, I know, talking to landowners, the private project was, could save significantly from, especially the north route, but there was major concern on how do you maintain it? If someone refused to pay, how do you get him to pay? About the only way is to take him to court.
Right, so I would, that would certainly, in my opinion, that would be extremely important if the county involved.
Yeah.
Not private.
Other stuff, and it'd end up not really being.
Especially.
Yeah, yeah, there's quite a few landowners. I've seen agreements work with two or three landowners, I haven't seen any with twelve or thirteen, but it can be done, but it's just difficult.
Mike, you guys have two questions. So the coefficient for the private is what?
I think it's half.
And the coefficient for the county is what?
When I was comparing it, it was just a half.
So you're comparing same coefficient?
Yes, yes. I basically used the same size pipe as the private. Was it a one inch?
The one inch.
Okay, well, okay, okay.
The county's one.
I used the same size of pipe. I didn't really determine for sure whether it's half or one inch. I used the same pipe size pipe.
They're using concrete, they're using plastic, basically.
Yes, yes.
So the county proposal is one, and the private is half?
Well, no, I used the same size pipe. I misspoke, I really didn't know what the coefficient was. I used the same size pipe, I thought it was a half inch.
What I'm asking is, if the private is half and the county is one, and the private's gonna have to be increased in price in order to be able to compare the two?
Yeah.
Okay, that's one question I have. The other one is, if your acres that go into the district are so, at a certain amount right now, but it crosses your farm, are you gonna, is your, the number of acres that you have classified as going in this tile gonna change?
Possibly.
My aunt's farm has seventeen acres in it, and if you cut through that whole thing, are you gonna assess the whole thing?
Probably, but if they're right close to the district, to the outlet.
It is not needed at all for her, and it's, you know.
Well, we'd look at the type of soil it is, the need.
I've heard all that, but I know how that goes.
Basically, you're gonna pay.
Yeah, if the tile goes through, yeah.
Well, that'd be great.
Because you'll have the availability to tie onto it, whether you need it or not.
That's what drainage attorneys say.
That's what they say, there's nothing fair about drainage. It doesn't seem that way.
Yeah. That's what drainage attorneys will tell you, that by having it closer to you, and if it goes through you, it's pretty close, you'll pay, yeah. Now, right at the outlet, we did one recently, we reduced the charge to that parcel by fifty percent, and we've done it more than that at times, so. Yeah, it's all part of the reports that'll be filed. Okay.
All right, speak up, Trish.
If you wish to look at the petition for eleven to sub-one, is there going to be a pre-classification done at the same time as the preliminary engineering report? Is that what you're talking about?
I'm thinking it, we call it a pre-class, it could vary some from the final product, but we can at least get it very close. So we call it a pre-class of the alternate, using the alternate outlet for a project.
And that's just considering the acres that are annexed and anything in sub-one?
Yes. Well, and it will also include then some idea for the people, like along the ditch of sub-five. Well, we have points on all those parcels, so we'll probably use those points and then come up with new points for the alternate outlet, and combine that in a pre-class.
So you're gonna determine the cost per acre for each landlord?
Yeah, okay, it won't be exact. We should be with, if I was gonna throw out a number, I'd say it would be within ten to twenty percent of your final assessment. At least gives you a lot better idea. Right now, the people, say, on the ditch have no idea what this project would cost.
Dave, you got a question?
You have to make sure you figure the price of that pipe under the road in there.
Yeah, because that's.
That's part of.
That's what, I will want to get that study that was done. I pulled out our study, and back then, we were looking at a, I think it was a two-inch drainage coefficient through the roads, through gravel roads, and at that time, we said that an eighty-four inch pipe would be acceptable. It needs to be looked at again. This is a major change in acres.
I took more out there, and we stood there and looked at it when the water was maybe higher on this house side than it was on the north side. So I'm gonna dispute the fact that it's a two-inch coefficient when you got water backed up like that.
I don't remember what, they call it headwater, and I don't remember what we'd figured into that.
I understand that.
Yeah, I knew you would, yeah, yeah.
But the thing about it is, when you had the dredge ditch there, you had a big V, the water could just go, and I put a pipe in there, it can't do that.
Yeah, yeah. It's a definite effect. Is it significant, would it something we'd have to look at again?
But that's what the landlords want, they want all the costs.
Right.
It's gotta be changed, and they need to know that.
Yeah. Yeah, that's where I'd like to get the facts and figures on this other, yeah, to know the effects.
So what happens in forty days then? Is the reclassification's gonna come in? What's gonna transpire here? Is the county tile gonna be, is that gonna be looked at, proposed then, voted on? What's gonna happen here? The one going to the north that's been proposed for a long time. I just wanna, time frame, to see what's going on here.
I believe there's gonna be a petition submitted to do the engineering part of going to the northeast. I think this hearing should be continued until the same day as the hearing on the reclassification, so that people on the tile have the right of remonstrance to that original project. But at that same time, I'd like that, say, delayed a couple weeks, so that we can have a preliminary engineering report for the northeast outlet also, so that we're considering everything that day. The both outlets, the possible costs, and that just the people on the tile have the right of remonstrance.
Do you want to take a new petition to go northeast?
Yeah.
I'm just, I had done, I'm Gary Peterson.
Oh, okay.
I had done the original petition.
Okay.
And I'm not in a position right now to do a second petition. I'll just let everybody know that right now.
Sure, okay, okay.
So if somebody else wants to step forward, that's great.
Okay, okay.
Is it fair to say you're not totally against another petition to?
I'm not against another petition.
You just don't wanna do the petition.
I'm not gonna do it.
Sure, sure.
And from the county side, if they have to change that pipe through the road, that comes as a county expense, it's not a drainage district expense, but the taxpayers still pay for it.
Yeah, yeah, well put.
It's for the whole county.
Well put.
And the district expense?
Well, unfortunately, the bridges, you'd think they should be, it was spent there. I mean, I always thought they should be, but they're not.
Yeah, as drainage districts, anything in the road right of way is paid by secondary roads, basically, which obviously is part of the county.
You're adding more land to this district, so now we gotta upsize the paving the road, which we have no say so in. Depending on the secondary roads department. It doesn't seem logical either. As I say, drainage is not right or fair, it's not very logical.
I know, there, the code as a whole gets things accomplished, but there's things like this that don't seem logical. When a change in the drainage district.
Yeah, when you change a site.
Band-aids, a pipe, new pipe, yeah, you think, yeah.
It works the same for state roads as well.
Yeah.
If the pipe is upsized, it's, okay, it goes underneath your road, you need a bigger pipe. And then therefore, the state or county pays for that bigger pipe.
Mm-hmm, yes, very true.
That's just, yeah, one of those not exactly perfect things in the code.
One of the quirks of the drainage law. I haven't looked at forty days, I don't think Trish had a chance to either. October ninth? And this is where, to play it safe, I'm wondering about, suggesting that you have it a couple weeks after that, because the petition gets filed, we'd like to get that report done, and that hearing scheduled all at the same time.
Tonight, or the twenty-third of October?
That'd give us time then, if one of these go forward, we could do our exploration, locate the existing tile, and get the design work done, and let it in January, February, which actually is a good time for bidding, that could save you an extra ten percent, right there. I know it's delaying things, but we'll get it done, and it would be your best shot of getting good prices.
Okay. So we're looking to, pre-class report, and set the hearing date for October twenty-third?
What have you got?
Now we gotta do a motion to continue.
Yeah, to continue this hearing also, yeah.
So to get a motion to continue this hearing till October twenty-third?
Yes.
All right.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. I got another quick question, I'm sorry. So on October twenty-third, if you don't get another petition, will we be voting basically on the current petition?
Yes, and accepting the reclassification that day, we'll get it so that just the people on that tile are the ones that can.
They're the right reason.
There you go, well put.
So the hearing date for the reclassification is also October twenty-third?
Yes, okay.
So that's the end date on that stuff. Except with the preliminary information and numbers that we're all looking for on the other project, or the direction of the project.
Yes.
Then, we think it's not, that's gonna be the question.
Right, it's, yep, and by setting this a couple weeks later, if there's a petition in the next few days, we'll get that report submitted timely, so that it can all be done, it can all be done that day. We'll have the report on the other alternate, we'll have the current report, and we'll have a reclass.
So we should have apples to apples.
Yes, yeah.
That will be done.
Yes, yep.
And if the new petition does get done, it should be done at the one inch, so that the two.
Yes, absolutely, yep, good point.
Yeah, I'm picking that, it's a good time. Nine o'clock?
Nine o'clock.
On October twenty-third.
When you start reclassifying this stuff, and we know what the district was established in nineteen thirty-nine, I'm just throwing this food out.
Yeah, sure.
We know that that's worked for eighty years, right? And there's never been a problem with lawsuits or anything like this. You start going somewhere else and throwing this reclassification stuff in there, I think you're making a nightmare, maybe, for a lawyer's delight down the road.
It's possible, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, but you know what, it's just like Jeff said, thirty years ago, I sat right here at the same time, he said you can't go east. We tried that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not disagreeing with your statement, it's just that things have changed enough in that length of time. Usually, the new reclassifications are more fair, but it does give an option for somebody to object to it.
When you have the same land reclassified twice, you're asking for trouble.
Perhaps, yeah.
And it ain't that I'm not for saving money, either, don't, we're not gonna go there.
Sure, sure, yeah, sure, sure, yeah.
But sometimes you don't save any, because you end up costing money down the road.
Yeah.
That's why the private plan here did not work, because it was, by the time you got through with it.
Well, there's just too many uncertainties with the private, I think, you know, and what means, how do you?
Too many landlords with private businesses. Here in St. Paul, there's too many, too many personnel.
Yeah, it's very difficult.
And the plan changes hands, and.
Yeah, and then how do you get the new landowner to pay, and, because they weren't, they'd say they weren't part of the original agreement, yeah. It can work, but usually it's two or three landowners, not thirteen or whatever it is.
We also have to have a motion for the acceptance, well, actually, it would be.
Well, let's make that motion until it's official. Except the hearing date, you better make that official.
Well, we'll have to have a pre-class.
Well, we'll have to have a reclass on the, if the other's next five, if that's the scheme, just that way, that's the team. Well, that's.
Yeah, technically, we probably should have the hearing on the reclass of sub five first, so that just the people in the tile portion of it have the right of remonstrance. And then, continue the hearing on this preliminary engineering report, and then you can make a motion setting for a new report that hasn't been authorized yet. So that'll have to wait till we see if there's a petition. But my recommendation is have the reclass hearing first, so that it's official, and then continue this hearing, so that you have, you can review the facts and review the right of remonstrance. And then, if there's a petition for the other alternate outlet, we'll have that done in time, so you can hold it at the same time, basically. So you have an all the facts in front of you.
So we need to continue this reclassification report till that date, and move it ahead of what we just did?
I'd say so, just to, for.
To continue?
Yeah. The reclass hearing is just not a continuation, it's just setting the hearing date for the reclassification.
Okay.
And then it's a continuation of the sub five of eleven hearing on the preliminary engineering report.
It needs to be before the other hearing.
The reclass one, I think, should be first.
All right, so then I'm looking for a motion to accept this reclassification report, set the hearing date for eight forty-five on October twenty-third.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Excellent.
And I think we'll have, we'll deal with Paul and have him give us a rough estimate on the cost on that box culvert or whatever we'd have to put in there too, because it's gonna be an added cost to the project, even though the landowners don't pay for it, but the county has to pay for it.
There you go, that's a good point.
Which the landowners pay for part of that, so.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Will there be a determination about whether or not it's needed? Or are you just asking for a cost estimate? Does there disagree about whether or not it's needed?
Well, and.
Well, they do, when they, they'll have to add in acres upstream, they do that study, you know, hydrology study, and.
We'll look at it, secondary roads will look at it, and we'll see as far as any other reports that have been looked at for it. We should have two or three people looking at that to give a recommendation soon, real soon, I'd say. That'll be part of the recommendations of any new report that's filed.
Thank you.
When we get the plans, when we get the plans for the project going east, is it possible to get us a copy of it?
Uh, would you say plans, there'll probably just be a layout with sizes on it.
That's what I want.
Okay, yeah.
Is it possible to get everybody a copy of that, so we know where we're at?
Yeah, and right now, all I've got is one that was done privately. And I sized it like that, but I didn't do a new drawing. We'll be doing a new drawing to accompany the report. And yes, that would be made available.
But I don't have to wait if they decide to go.
A private one will get it.
Up to stop us.
Yes, I'll verify the size for coefficient. Yeah.
I think you're gonna have to have every.
Easily could be, yeah, we'll look at it.
An exestation from adding additional land into sub one from sub five, when does that take place?
Uh, it should be just anytime now, I mean, it, well, technically, it's, it doesn't have to be done unless they're looking seriously going that way. So I wouldn't do it for sure until you get a petition.
If you don't get a petition, then we don't give a.
There you go. But if you get a petition, then the board will probably need to take action authorizing the annexation report.
At the same time?
Same time.
I think we're done.
Yeah.
Because.
Yeah. And this thing has a whole lot of curves in it.
Gets clear as mud at some point here.
I know, I know.
The possible reclassification, annexation, all that, if, if the project would go to the east. The way I understood this, going through all this, we would look at the project and then determine if that was the direction they wanted to go, the direction of the plan they wanted to go at before the reclassification. Am I correct on that?
I would think so.
Yeah, before the official reclassification of.
Okay, so that would not come until after October twenty-third?
Right, but I, what I intend to have for October twenty-third, if there's a new petition, is a rough estimate of what anybody in the watershed would be paying.
Correct.
Yeah, but it would not be.
It'd be nothing official, because there's no reclassification on all of that business.
Right, the minimal cost, we just use what we have for units and try and assign that.
Let me make that clear.
Yes.
So it's not, is that what you were asking, or you were wondering? So there is gonna be no official action for the reclassification, but there is gonna be the real close estimate and the exact cost with the engineering report for that project.
Yes, yes.
At the correct coefficient.
Right, all of that, yes, yeah.
Really for sure know about the culvert cost and all that.
Right, yes.
So would you see a petition? Would you receive a such petition whenever we're meeting?
Mm-hmm.
And.
Technically, then you should wait till we submit it for you to actually set the hearing on the new report. You wouldn't set, well, because, till you have it in your hands, yeah, because you're technically accepting a new report and setting a hearing date, so you should have it in your hands.
But that could fall within the same time, you think?
I believe so, because if the petition comes in the next few days, we will just push it and get that report done.
How about the annexation? Would that be done on the same day also?
That'd be awful challenging.
It'd be challenging because.
Because what if they don't let them in?
Well, it's gonna be hard not to let them in as a county project.
Okay.
But we have to look at the extra costs involved and make that part of the discussion. But the, and, now, this is gonna be a little complicated, the twenty-third also, because this hearing's continued, so there's a right of remonstrance on the original project, but it will be just the people on the tile, so that's a corrected situation. If there's a new report filed for an alternate outlet, the right of remonstrance will also apply to that. Yeah. And it's gonna be further complicated because the people, I'm thinking the people on the ditch may have a say in that, because they're gonna help pay for that east outlet. So I think there'll have to be notice to everybody, including the open ditch, for the alternate outlet, because they'll be paying. But if we go follow the old route, it's just the people on the tile. So it's, yeah, like I say, this has got so many curves in it, yeah.
Can we get an opinion from you as to a recommendation of what direction you would go? Is that possible?
Yeah, I wanna get the figures, but I've done, I've looked at it just enough to know that I believe the landowner cost total would go down a couple hundred thousand dollars. And I believe we can get the drainage capacity going either way, to the point that I guess it's probably advisable to the east and save the money. My general opinion at this point.
But after you do the study, things might change.
It could, yeah, it could. Yep. I would be sure.
The landowners going to the east have no say so about more water coming into their ditch?
Well, um.
They have no say so about that?
There's some say so in that the boards usually ask for the effects to be studied on that. And what that would involve is, what's the cross-section of that ditch that it would drain into? What's the slope on the ditch? We know that the north-south ditch has a lot of slope on it, the one that the stub ditch jumps into. We know that has a lot of slope. But we have not looked at the east-west stub ditch to see the capacity of it. It's typically hard to overload a ditch with tile, but this pipe thing comes into account on this one.
Yeah, I mean, you can overload the structures on the ditch.
Yes, yeah, much easier than you can overload the ditch, yes. So it's, it's all part of the studies involved, yeah, and that's where I want extra opinions, if we can get them, so.
My only question is, is it come to a vote or not, yes or no?
Uh, the annexation, I don't believe comes to a vote, but again, we should probably talk drainage attorney just to be sure that procedure's followed here, so. The board can vote it down if the effects are adverse enough going the other direction. For example, does it need a bigger pipe? What's that cost? Is that enough to throw a big red light up? Yeah, we'll be looking at that. It's actually a little harder to get it done privately than it is as a county job, as far as approvals and permission. With the county one, what you'd be looking at, the appraisal report also, where anybody you go through, you'd have factors for crop loss, you'd have factors for easement. There'd be a new easement required going to the northeast. And with new projects, you pay something for that easement.
Now, easement, you'd be, this kinda goes back to Mike's deal. Marlists would get paid for going through their fields.
The field where we'd outlet through, yeah, yes.
So that's what the permanent easement is, the temporary easement, both would have.
Yes, yes. Yep, that's a good point.
Which might also have some for.
Yeah, it'd help their costs, yeah. And we have figures we've used now in recent years on how that has been paid. So if that becomes part of the discussion, we can give people a fairly good idea what that payment might be. Okay. I think you've passed the motion you need to for this one, I believe, so.
Any other questions on this?
I've got some cards here, if you need my number, which I said otherwise, we're probably on speed dial. No, oh, good.
Okay, let's move on to BD.
You asked me something. The original, going north, going northwest, the original district project, you'd be laying a pipe alongside the old.
That's the general plan at this point.
Okay, so the one-inch coefficient that you're talking there, is the new pipe a standalone at one inch?
Yes.
So it's a one-inch plus.
Plus the old pipe.
Debatable whether it's an eighth or a, or a sixth, or a twelve on the old ditch.
Yeah, right.
Or a whole tile.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
As a standard of one-inch coefficient.
Correct.
For drainage engineers.
That's it.
Oh, thank you.
Um, minimum standard now is half inch, I would say. I would say that a majority of the projects now, though, are going to the one inch. I'm avoiding a direct answer, I guess, there, but that's.
That's fine.
Yeah, minimum of half, general standard, many of them going to one inch. It's, when they're, I'll make this a very short story. A few years ago, we were closing an ag well drainage wells, and when there's grant money involved, a one-inch coefficient costs about half as, or twice as much as a half inch, because the state was paying three-fourths of the half-inch project. So they didn't get any more grant money if you went up to one inch, so that one inch was costing about twice as much. First time I figured that, I still remember, the one-inch came out just over five hundred dollars an acre, and the half-inch, two hundred and fifty. If there's no grant money involved, for about twenty percent more money, you can go from half-inch to one-inch. So you're getting a hundred percent increase in drainage for about twenty percent increase in cost. That's why Humboldt County's kinda been the leader in the number of one-inch coefficient projects they've done. It just, yeah.
Nothing's ever big enough.
There you go, yeah, yeah, too.
Never everybody says that, I don't mean it too big.
Yeah, that's right. Well, and costs typically go up, you know, I've never heard anybody say, you know, I wish we hadn't done this project ten years ago. It's always, why didn't we do this project ten years ago at half the cost? So, yeah.
That's a deal. One step forward again, we'll, yeah. Anything else? All right, we're gonna move on then to BD number three, Branch A.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah.
Any other outputs?
Yeah. Trish has my number, if you don't have it, I do have some, oops, sorry. Yeah, see it, Dave. Some cards if people want that, so. Um, this branch, you're probably familiar with.
I've looked at it all.
Yeah, yeah, yep, it kinda comes off.
On behalf of his mother to clean it out.
Sure.
They said that some of the tile was there full and underwater.
Yeah, that, it's got a fair amount of material in the ditch, and it appears that it'd be one that you could do hourly.
One break, Mike.
Oh, sure.
One more thing on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know if I'm asking, but there's some ground that may have to get sold to take this kind of stuff, so.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
The landowners may not hang on to their ground because of the drainage project.
I, yes, happened, it's unfortunate.
Unfortunate, it should never happen.
Yeah, because it could be quite a cost.
Yeah, it's, it's just something else. So, I mean, that's. Anyway.
Yeah, that's, yep, valid point. Okay. Yeah, I'm gonna back up just a little, just so I don't forget. The contractor on three, we're not gonna have him do it, obviously.
Right, good.
And last week, he was told, you're gonna get a different bucket, and you're gonna go right back to the beginning and do this over. So we've got people down here, now, I, they may have called them and see if they were coming because of the rain, but they were planning to drive down this morning, the contractor and our people, to be there and have them start over and do it right. This, it was, when our inspector got me the pictures, it's like, really? I mean, and the contractor had good references, and I think they're capable, but they were just, I think the project manager who was out there was just anxious to do it quickly. And you can't, with that slop, you have to come across fairly slow, you have to tip the bucket up and swing. If you go fast, you don't, you're in with anything in your bucket but water, so, yeah.
Well, thank you, you know, I mean, you guys are just doing your job.
Yeah.
And you realize all this, we've talked about it, there again, it gets back to, there was a lowest bid, the sign would be the lowest bid.
Well, they're gonna do a good job.
Yeah.
They do things differently.
Yeah.
And he says they don't work with this type of material.
Well, I had a big concern, they're from what, South Dakota?
Yeah.
Not to discriminate against other states, but the fact that they came in, they had the good references, but I guess the question on that, yeah, they will, Rip, the guys keeping a close watch on them, are they gonna send in, okay, this costs more money, we gotta pay more for.
They may do, ask something like that, I mean, I don't know. The owner was very concerned, because I told his project manager, I said, you're going three times as fast as anybody's ever gone on a ditch. You can't do the job like that and get it right. He apparently got right to the owner, because the owner called me right away and said, I'm scheduled to teach a crane operator class, but I will come down if you want me to. I said, let us talk to your people in the field, let us see how they do the next day. If you need to come down, I'll let, I'll give you a call. So, and I didn't understand, you have a project manager and an operator on the job nearly all the time, but one machine.
Two people there, and so they could very easily have one guy checking the bottom and they'll go.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
But they haven't been, because we give them stakes every time they're to be, for them to check into. So, you know, usually, yeah.
I mean, at this point, if there's something that you lost, it's time.
Yeah.
Because, well, they thought they're doing it for a few, you don't, because you have to go back, you have to do it correctly.
Yes.
That's the key thing.
Yes.
So, time is time, it's their time, but if they come back and say, well, this took us longer than we thought, or we need more money for it, no.
No, they bid it for that price.
That price, and that specifications.
Correct.
The problem is they're not doing it to the specifications.
Right, but you know, my point is, they don't get paid extra, because.
They're still only removing the dirt quantity that you recalled for.
There's nothing added to.
We didn't change the time.
Right, right.
Very unfortunate, you know, I mean, it's great, you're doing what you're supposed to do, instead, you know, you keep an eye on them. But very unfortunate, they weren't able to start from the get-go and do the job correctly.
We have, we have a contractor that brought in a supervisor from a district, different county, to show him how bad it was. I hate that.
That's just, that's not what we're looking for.
No, that's terrible.
You know, granted, this is all ditch clean out.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, and you've said too, I mean, there's a way, right and wrong way to do it. One thing about it, you're not burying something in the ground as per a tile project, but can you imagine there, again, it gets back to these contractors, they have this huge concern. Most bid isn't particularly lowest bid, and I don't, Rick speaks to, you know, we're not gonna pay it anymore, but it's their time. Rick's gonna make sure it's done correctly.
I'm not too concerned, I, they're a good reputable company, we visit with them out there, they'll do it right.
Yeah.
If they're a good reputable company, and Rick got after them from the, you know, get-go, that, you know, you shouldn't even have to be having too much of this discussion.
That's right, but they, yeah, yeah. I, it'll get remedied, I'm, I'm, I'm with Rick, I think, because the, the guy in the field was concerned enough, he called the owner right away, and I told him, we're not paying for this the way it is.
No.
You can't go that fast and do the job. So the owner was aware and concerned enough, he said he would come right down if that's what it took.
Oh, I mean, you're on it, it's gonna be correct, it's not gonna cost, uh, any more than the original.
Headaches we shouldn't have.
No, we have, headaches, we just went through a big one.
Yeah.
And then, that's what I'd like to avoid.
Yeah.
And if you can, just avoid it, but, you know, you're doing your job.
That's what we're gonna do all after that.
Anywhere, like, it's completion on it, through all that.
I can't remember what the date is on this one, I think it's late this fall, yeah.
I guess my point or question is, are they gonna follow up, completion and.
I doubt it. No, I don't think so, I don't think so, no. This all leads me to the fact that we would recommend somebody local to do your clean out that you're looking at on this agenda item. Either Meyer or Peterson or Marcel.
How big is this?
It goes across one section diagonally.
Yeah.
About a mile?
Yeah. Meyer or Peterson would do a fine job, I'm quite sure. I know Marcel has a long reach also, I don't know how tied up he is. Oh, okay.
Appreciate the reference.
Okay, very good.
That's actually not why I was here, but yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay, 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 well, good, I didn't see you back there.
Cleaned out, it'll be right here.
Yes.
Yeah, when you guys have, I do have a question on that.
Sure.
Cleaned out right now.
Well.
I can't remember.
Oh, so Peterson's coming up six forty seven.
He's coming right along, he's got some of that north-south part to do yet, so I've been out there for a while. That's what we're shooting for, um, we're trying to refine that routine a little bit, because we're not getting as good a growth as we hoped for.
Does that do the fact we haven't had any rain on it?
Yes, we believe that's the case. And now, even with what we've got now, there'll be enough moisture there to really speed it up.
This is on the Worceford, so this is Worceford right here.
Yeah, it definitely needs it.
We just, we're just, when it is, it does need it, yeah.
Yeah.
And that, that will be under the cost, so it could be just a.
Yeah, you can just, uh, basically get somebody out there and do it.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Does it need a state and that stuff, or could the guy just clean it?
You should be able to just clean it, we'd like to be out there when they start, just to, just see where they hit hard bottom and, and how the bottom's looking, but. Couple hours in the job.
Guy operated their day, says I can't peel a bottom.
And on the rest of three, you can't, because it's, somewhere it was overdug, and it's just silt that they're digging through, so. It's difficult, that's why they can't hurry.
What do we need to do on the clean out and on, uh, Branch A?
Just to point.
Authorize somebody to, or authorize somebody to do the clean out, basically, um, yeah.
Just as a work order then?
Yeah.
How much, uh, what phase are we at?
How long would you think on a mile, of course, you probably, you don't know what you ditch were trucking.
No, I don't technically ditch trucking, okay, because one of the landowners came up about a foot.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
I, I didn't go out there and probe it.
Right.
But I'm guessing you probably have, what, have you guys gone out there and probed it all?
No, no.
I'm sure there's probably two feet at least.
Yeah, you got, you got, you got.
It's probably, they're closer to four in some places, with these of them big tiles, you know, and these of the waters clear up.
Usually, usually by general, general rule, something, you know, the, the ditch bottom is, let's say, five foot, six foot-ish. For every foot of dirt that you got up there, you're about four thousand miles, so if you've got three foot of dirt, you're gonna be about twelve thousand foot a mile, two, two foot, or eight thousand miles.
Oh, okay.
From past experience.
Sure, sure, sure.
Gives us a general idea.
Yeah, yeah.
Would you have time to do it?
Yeah, I mean, I'm over, just on the west side of Thor right now, so I, I couldn't go in and do it, yeah, once done, so.
Yeah, he's working on the spot clean outs on six now.
I guess, I guess, I guess, there is no CRP along there, so, makes it sure they're told. To get the crop out, yeah, it's got.
There's a little CRP along one side, I know.
Yeah.
I think, I think it's up the upper end though.
Well.
You can.
Yeah, I remember driving, I can't remember.
You can drive in on the south side of it, going along, up about three-fourths of it.
Oh, yeah.
But then, uh, farm, the ground, the field dried up back to it on there.
Okay, okay, the rest of it, okay.
No, we, I would get.
Yeah, I think the north end, they farm the south, and it's got CRP on the south side.
It could be done a small little bit away, yeah.
And I've been told by landowners, farmers, that, that the crop is far enough along, it's gonna be a little early if anything when they're.
Yeah, when they're looking. Weather permitting.
Right, right, always include that, yeah.
Now, yeah, weather permitting, I think you're correct.
Something like that, or they'll, if you, if they know it's gonna get cleaned out, they can go out there, they'll take out twenty percent.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, as, one of the people I met with last week on the reclassification, says he starts on his corn at twenty-three percent, because he has so much to do, so, yeah.
We need to. I think there's beans on one side and corn on the other side.
Okay.
That's gonna be cleaned from one side, I remember, right?
I think so, he's got a good long reach, yeah, and knows what we want.
So, this doesn't need a vote, it's just a work order.
No, I'd say go ahead and get it done, and, and, good discussion, but.
Yeah, but, yeah, that's great.
All right.
And we just wanna be there as he starts.
Yeah, and then we could probably even fix that blowout on that tile I showed you.
Yes, yes, and we got laugh out there to mark that, so nobody drove into it, so.
I showed.
Got the one that was picked up, but what, no?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was.
It, it would, it would not be good if you wanted.
Oh, no, it'd be serious.
A little close to the ditch.
It's, it's a little bit away, and, and that's why our guy didn't see it, when, because he flew it with the drone and didn't pick up on it. But he showed me the, the drone flight, and it, and you could see the hole off to the side, but it was far enough away. He was looking right at the ditch and didn't see it, so, uh, it's.
It's probably ten foot deep.
Is that a mile?
It's a surface stream, yeah, that has some kind of problem with the site, yeah.
You can fix that, if you're there.
That's on the ditch that I go?
No.
That's on a different, a new one?
It's on three, but further south where they're cleaning out.
Oh.
Just, just, uh, it's in that little triangle section, which is.
Yeah, they cleaned out the north-south part on the west side of the road, just to the southeast from the bottom of that is where this is. So, and, and we can go over that with you.
Okay.
We've got that handled, we're not moping on it, so.
Thanks. Oh, shoot, okay, I'm trying three. All right, let's move on to the DD number twenty, what?
Twenty-five.
Oh, I said, I said, I'm on Penn Avenue and two hundred and sixty at the very beginning part of that, that spot clean out we're doing there.
Yeah, DD six, west of Thor.
Along the drainage, I, I don't, we've only known as R, and to go along the ditch, I'm gonna have to tear out this guy's pasture fence and whatnot. I went a little bit to, um, the west and cut through this guy's field, and I don't know who it is, but I know he's also gonna probably want a little bit of crop damage or something like that.
Yeah.
But it's only for about two hundred foot, you know, beans, and that's the only way I could get to this certain area that Jason's got marked out on there and whatnot. I, I wanted to run it by you guys, so I went ahead and did it, maybe you could see it, Rick, maybe you know this.
We should look maybe afterwards here, who that would be.
I'm not gonna be out there, I couldn't like anywhere, so, I mean, I can, I can address that, but I just. What's that?
Beaver, right?
Yeah, it was, yeah. It's on like two hundred and sixty street. Is it Secor, is that close, I'm trying to. Yeah, right there, yeah, so it's, it's right here is where it'd go across, and there's a little waterway that comes out, so it's, it wouldn't be that much, but, I hate to do it, but.
Oh, yeah, just to drive across the field, yeah. And we paid for some corn this summer, where we were in the wrong location. I know it's not funny, because it, it was a bad, bad thing, but we stiffed up and paid for the loss, and, yeah.
Right. Anyways.
But if you'd have notified ahead, yeah.
Something, I was talking to that one.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that was?
Brandon Myers.
Brandon Myers.
M I E R, something like that, how is it, it's spelled?
M A I E R.
M A, okay.
And where's he from?
He go broke car in there.
Obviously you worked with him.
Yes, we have, very conscientious, uh, what I remember about him, I think it was just last year, he left a project for a short time, came back, and when he was checking the engine out, he found a nest of snakes.
Nice.
On his battery.
Oh, that's something.
And he sent that picture to everybody of these snakes in his machine. Yeah, he doesn't like snakes at all, anyway.
Not that you want snakes in your engine compartment, but one thing, they're better than the alternative, because they wouldn't chew through the wiring, I don't.
Well, true, true.
You wouldn't want a woodchuck running in there, or a rodent, these type animals, they will eat all the wiring off of the engine, and then you have a major affair.
Oh, yeah.
These snakes you can just get rid of, they didn't cause that.
Exactly, there you go, there you go, yes.
Okay, now we'll move on to DD one twenty-five.
And did you find that request to continue this, or wasn't that on this, from Gary, Nate?
I thought I had a request for continuation. This is for one twenty-five, uh, so one, uh, went through Gary Neve's property, um, and, um, there was the main tile, that went on the whole route north-south, and there, and there was a branch one that went over and caught three ag wells to the west of the main. So, we have split this based on where people are and soils, and the classification for the main, we spread eight hundred thousand dollars, and the classification for the branch one, we spread eighty thousand dollars. So. This uses our typical method of soils as a starting point, with the different points and different soils, and that takes into account things like slope, uh, suitability for crop, um, some of the soils classifications even say, good for row crop if drained. Uh, that, I love seeing them like that, because that really just tells you, it needs the tiling, the pipe work, to be productive, so. While the commissioners and I were meeting late last week for sub-five, to sign, to review and sign that one, Gary and I had set it up that I was gonna call him when we were done and we were gonna meet. Well, he called me back and said, can I come in and talk to the commissioners, because it was the same commissioners on sub-five as one twenty-five. So Gary came in and was asking questions about how we did it, um, and appealing to the commissioners to recommend a reduction in his levy. Now, we already did a significant reduction on his, because he's so close to the outlet. And I mean, this, I, this is just my worksheet, I got copies of it. This is for this district, and you'll just see the handwritten numbers in there. We, these are factors we did because of proximity. In other words, the land very close to the outlet got a significant reduction, because they could have put in their own tile very cheaply. So, Gary's very small piece right at the outlet, we reduced fifty percent. That's at the upper, just at the very upper end here of the line, if, if you have that handwritten adjustment thing at the top.
Yeah.
It's very, it's just the first, there's a little fifty written, right up at the top there. That means that's a fifty percent reduction in the points. And then his first full forty, that's still so close that we reduced that forty percent. And then as you get further down, his next parcel down, the next forty, we only did fifteen percent. Now, that takes care of the outlet area. The rest of the factors that have minus by them are how, if people are more than a quarter of a mile from the county improvements, we do some reductions on the parcels, because they have to pay money to get to the county system. So, um, as an example, I don't know if you can see, the section eighteen is that north section. In the southwest part of that, we did reductions, um, because they have to help, they have to pay for ladder one to get to the main. So we did some reductions there. And then you can follow down the left side of the sheet, if you have the, so you can read the numbers up right here. Those are between a quarter and three-fourths of a mile away from the county system, so we did reductions along there. You can see there's a whole string of minus tens, kinda on the center on the left-hand side. Uh, those were over a quarter, but less than half a mile from the ditch. And then as you get further down, the, or from the tile, as you get further down, they're further away, so you see some twenty percent reductions down there. Bottom line on all of this is, between the soils and these reductions, we arrived at the report that I gave you first. I'm sorry, what?
Oh, do you want copies or something? Yeah, I have. Several of these and.
Somebody get me up, pull me up to speed on this whole tile project.
Okay.
So this is which project, what's going on?
This is DD one twenty-five tile improvements, it closed twelve or thirteen ag drainage wells. Um, it's the, it's one where the state is paying three-fourths of the half inch coefficient system.
Yeah, yeah.
One inch system, is this stuff into the HAN that we're sold?
Yes, yes.
So it's all easily expecting from bringing it on?
Yes, yes.
So, this says classification.
This was not a district previously, it's a new district.
It was, yeah, it was a new district.
That's happened two or three years ago, actually, the establishment.
So it's, it's District one twenty-five?
Yes.
There was no, there was no reclass, pre-class?
No, no, no tile, there was no district here, we developed this district for this project of closing ag wells.
Okay.
I don't remember if we did a pre-class to give them an idea, or not, I don't remember, but, I don't.
I don't think so.
Think we just used an average cost and told them.
Was this long, long ago enough that maybe didn't do that?
The pre-classes weren't as common, yes, yeah.
So this is the really. So this is the really D classification?
Correct, yes, the original classification, and other than the request for extending the time, this is the time and place to object to the classification. Did you guys back there, when you see this as far as the dollars?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, okay. The discussion, I think, was that just Friday or Thursday, anyway, was, um, that in that north property, they have all their own tile in, they don't need this. Well, the law says you do not take into account private tile. The only way we take private tile into account is if it takes water out of a district. We do usually then reduce the person's assessment in the district they tiled out of, but they don't get out of the district. And I believe why the code specifically says you don't take the private tile into account is everybody has the right to do their private tiling. You don't, how do you know what they've done, when they did it, why they did it, so the law says you don't take the private tile into account. On the nave property, it's very deep for a lot of it, but right behind his building site out there, we brought a riser up to just within a few feet of the ground surface, so he can tie into that with almost any of that property out there. Yes, yeah, yeah, to have it more accessible. Well, yeah, you don't want somebody having to dig twenty-five feet deep to connect, yeah, so we did this. Now, um, it has changed the characteristic of the soils on the nave property some in having that much disturbance. But that's why there was, uh, an appraisal report, and we allowed wider damage there because it was so deep, we got wider. So, there, I don't, those payments, have that, have payments been made on that? Okay, I was thinking so. So he's been paid for the right-of-way and everybody else has, and your usual crop loss.
Yeah, in regards to that, I mean, this is the hearing, correct?
Yes.
Classification hearing.
Yeah.
This is all according to all of the stuff you gotta follow, and we have to follow. Does that enter into anything, any requests in that, but wouldn't he be here at this hearing if he had great concern about things?
Well, let me, I, I know he wouldn't mind me quoting him, because that's, he was very outspoken about it. He basically said, this did not give him enough time to get a new attorney and engineer up to speed to fight this. So he's expecting to, to fight this, um, and knock on wood, I hope it doesn't happen. We, we've never had one taken to district court. The, the code, the drainage law is very specific. If there's an official filing objection, objecting to the reclassification, it goes to district court, and it's a quick procedure. And I think that's why he's asking for more time, because he, he needs to make his final decision on if he's gonna appeal this. And if he appeals it, he wants time to get people up to speed on what's happened and why. We've already done significant reductions, and it's typical significant reductions where you're right at the outlet, so, um, well, and I went through it just after he met with us last week. If we had not done the reductions for proximity to the outlet, his levy for the main would have been just over fifty thousand, which included twenty-three hundred for ag well closure. With the reduction, it dropped to thirty-nine thousand five hundred.
And that's represented in these figures?
Yes.
And these, and these are the new reductions?
Yes.
This is, yeah, this is in line with the...
Yes, yes, that is correct, that is correct.
Does he know that?
Yes, well, I don't know if he knows those, yeah, I, I, we kinda went through that when he was in here, and, and said it was significant. Now, I didn't, I didn't actually write this out until afterwards, but, yeah. So he has to evaluate, was that significant enough, is it's not worth taking it to court? Because he has some levy on lateral one, two, it's over about fifty-five hundred, but he also got paid for the easements and crop loss. So, his out-of-pocket is a fair amount less because of the payment. Now, I, somewhere I have what his payment was, um, and I can get that if you wanna know, but... Today, the question is, do you go ahead and continue this?
My concern is, if we gave him the sixty days or whatever, it will not affect the getting this levy here in next March.
No.
The one we levy, March, right?
No, it should not, because I believe, if, if I remember the procedure correctly, it's like it has to go to district court within thirty days after the appeal of it. So it's quick.
That would be my concern, if we did prolong it, then it set it back another six, six months.
Yeah, this is in conjunction with, we're waiting on the completion of it, this is a pond thing.
Pond, anyway.
And that will be done.
Oh, yeah, they're, they're there with some great equipment, just, and they've got some of the pipe in already, yeah.
Appreciate Rick's concern, is this gonna extend it even, you know, further? 'Cause I don't wanna drag it out further than it's gonna be.
Right, right, already.
But this should not.
That's correct.
But they can proceed after the, right?
They could.
Proceed. Yes, yes, yes.
But if we did give him the opportunity to look it over, I don't wanna deny anybody the opportunity to discuss things with their attorney or whatever.
Yeah, right.
So I'm perfectly fine if we delay it sixty days, 'cause it's not gonna affect the outcome of wanting to get the levy. But if it doesn't affect the levy date, then I wouldn't be concerned.
And what would be in your favor with that is, if he gets an attorney and engineer involved, that would be time for them to see what we did, and maybe recommend to him, well, you're, you're gonna save ten grand, but you're gonna spend twenty thousand on us, um, you know?
Well, yeah, we don't need to go into discussion on, discussion on one person's...
Oh, no, 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 no.
But, you know. I guess Rick's probably fair, as long as it doesn't...
That's a very good point, it's a valid point.
I have a concern about the completion, I mean, it's a March levy regardless.
Yeah.
This is a little August, and I agree, don't wanna deny, that's why you have hearings. And I would've liked to have seen Mr. Dave in person for a letter, and maybe have the same outcome of the sixty days. If you have that much concern, wouldn't you be at an official hearing date?
I thought Gary was gonna be here today, but I, I didn't, don't remember him saying for sure, so...
But, Dave, I mean, Rick's point is extremely valid, but by the same token, if you didn't allow that, wrapped up this hearing, is that, being not an expert in drainage law, do we, do we have the right to say, hearing closed?
Yeah.
This is done, there's a classification, deal with it.
Yeah.
But then we face the getting sued, all that fun stuff down the road, if someone doesn't agree with it. We're just giving someone the chance to...
Look the numbers over with the different, his attorney's opinion on it, I guess.
Yeah.
And then hopefully when you say, okay, done, it's done, and you forward.
Yeah, it's, it's just not him, he's also...
I see there's some other folks involved. So what, what does that leave us then, just, uh, we have to push back and...
Just continuing the hearing to a specific date and time.
What is that?
Well, sixty days, it could get us like November twentieth, or November, November twenty-seventh? Somewhere in there.
But it murders me like, did, does the county have to provide an outlet from the chunk of ground to the main tile? Do I provide that as a private tile? Or...
Typically a private tile, we, we don't necessarily get the county access directly to each parcel. But if you're far enough away, hopefully we did some reduction. Help pay for that, I guess.
So far, reduction, you're talking like crossing a county, or county roads or something like that?
No, crossing, like for, if you have to cross a neighbor's field even. If you're over a quarter mile from the county system, we, we start reductions for that, to help, so, so you're not paying as much for the main, so you can put that towards an outlet if you need to. That's the idea.
So we, you have a date on that?
Well, if we did continue it, it'd be down to like November twentieth or twenty-seventh, it'd be sixty days, in two months.
Right, we pair it all parties with continuance for sixty days and see what happens.
Yeah, I mean...
So having done and said that, hopefully everything goes well in sixty days, we're gonna be, be out there again, towards the end of the year. Rest of the legality stuff be taken care of?
The dam will be completed?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Rest of everything it takes to wrap this project up, be wrapping it up in that timeframe? And get the levy done?
Yeah, so whether it cooperates at all with the dam, it'll be a couple weeks and they'll be done.
You gonna tie it or outlet and everybody know what's going on then, or...
Not required, but not a bad idea, I don't know.
What's that?
To let people know that this has been continued.
Well, like, well, like this, I got, I got a letter saying that... What's, what's it all about?
Yeah.
I mean, nobody...
I guess that's, it falls back on Trish to, to do a, an informal notice, another mailing.
Or is it, it's obviously published?
Yeah, like I say, it's not a legal requirement, but it's not a bad idea, because anybody who's not here, they, they don't have any way to know that what action was taken, other than reading the paper. So I, I, yeah.
If you don't have papers on it.
Yeah. Are you missing it?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, if you miss all, that's hard work. Find out what dates...
Yeah, yeah, there you go. No, no, that's, and there, there's no time, legal time spelled out as far as when they need to get the notice, so I mean, if it, if they don't... She does, if she misses the twenty days ahead like the...
Yeah.
No, this is gonna, this is a continuation of a...
This is more of a courtesy.
There you go.
Courtesy, what, courtesy.
Yes, yes, it's a good idea, if, but it would be a courtesy letter, yeah.
All right.
Should we set the, uh, November twentieth, twenty-seventh?
Twentieth?
Maybe the twentieth.
'Cause, uh, is it...
I, I, I just like it, 'cause if, if that's fifty-nine days or whatever it is, that's okay. I mean, 'cause he's asking for sixty, but you're coming very close to it, so, just in case something gets delayed again.
Yeah, okay. Let's shift to the twentieth.
Twentieth, twenty? Second that.
Should we make that at nine o'clock? Okay, so we gotta, gotta continue this on November twentieth at nine o'clock. Have a motion to that effect.
Second that.
Is that, Dave, that was your first motion?
Yeah.
Eric, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Super. Well, just so you know, Gary handed me the, the report from Don Adler on that, that...
I've actually seen Doug's report.
Yeah, I, I had to, but...
Going that structure through the room?
Yeah. Yep, so I'll, I'm gonna, I'll read this more thoroughly now, but basically saying minimal effect, but we'll, we'll read through it, probably talk...
Well, and you're gonna, yeah, do all the stuff we talked about.
Yep. Yep.
Anything else for Greg?
Yes, sorry.
Darn it.
Well, I was just gonna update you on the pond progress, but they, Denver was out there last week getting the stand pipe. There's a big, like thirty-six inch, and that controls the permanent pond level, they got that in. They've gotten the, the pipe down low, we put in a pipe down low about a twelve-inch, that if the pond ever needed to be drained completely, that valve can be opened up and the bond, pond can be drained completely. So now all they need is, is the good conditions for erpiling to get back in there. Great equipment, um, they're all GPS controlled, we've been pleasantly impressed with their mode of operation. So, we had set control points out there, they, they checked into all those, and that all let them coordinate their GPS with our GPS, and, and so far, everything's looking good on that construction, so. We talked about D three, D three cleanout already. DD four cleanout, um, the contractor that has that job is finishing one up in O'Brien County. I'm guessing he'll be out there in two weeks or a little more. He's got some pipe work to do in O'Brien County yet, but then he'll be moving over here, so. In conjunction with that DD four, you'd asked us about repairing pipe downstream, uh, below where we were working. Last week, we sent letters out to every landowner along the ditch, uh, saying we're gonna be, we're looking to do pipe repairs, outlet repairs. If you have any, please mark them and call us and let us know. Stressing that you can't see them this time of year unless water's flowing a lot. So, hopefully that gets some results back. We did drone that curve in the, in the ditch further west. Yeah, yeah, we're not sure what we're gonna do there yet. Our inspector looked at a pipe out there in the general area, and if it's where he thinks it is, it's a major restriction in the flow. So, our guys were gonna get out there late Friday, I have not been into the office today to talk to them. Just way too small a pipe, but I'm, I'm hoping he was on some kind of lateral, and it wasn't the main, 'cause otherwise that pipe's gotta come out. No, it's a, just a field drive.
Oh, field, right.
Yeah. And, and I'll stretch that into further, uh, conversation here. On three, there's a culvert that really needs to come out. Need to be politically correct here.
Is that the one I was, we were looking at when I was there?
Yes, yes, it says high.
Way high.
Yeah, it is, it's high.
Way high.
Is that a driveway?
Yes.
Private driveway? Yeah, private drive across.
We need to take it out. Two different drainage attorneys we work with have told me, on a field drive, if it's, if it needs to come out and be lowered, the district can take it out, but it's up to the landowner to put it back. Now, I don't know that Doug Striker's had much experience with this, but I guess wanted to verify who you want me talking to to get a legal opinion.
Someone that has that experience.
Well, that's what I'm after. I, I talked to, I called Dave Wolenzeen, uh, from Manson, because I've worked with him several times in Calhoun County, and he's done their drainage work, legal work for thirty years. He, he said, oh, policy is that if it has to be lowered, the district takes it out and the landowner puts it back. Now, the problem with that is, and, and I think he's right, and Hudson has said the same thing to me two or three times. It's hard to get the pipe out without damaging it, so the landowner's not only paying to put it back, he's paying to buy a new pipe, so...
It's expensive, you're buying...
This is a ninety, ninety inch, I think, yeah.
Yeah, it's a big pipe.
Big pipe, yeah. So, I want, I wanna be sure of the legal advice that you get, and, um, another one we've worked with in the past, Eric Edie, from Fort Dodge, um, Dave Johnson from Clarion, again, not a lot of experience. And I'm just gonna throw a little comment out here. If you ever get in a court situation with drainage, I'd recommend Dave Johnson. Came up against him at one, in a, in a court case several years ago, he's very good.
Worthy from Clarion.
Yeah, but he's another one you can talk to, um, there's several of them out there. And nothing against Doug, he, he's a good attorney, it, just, I'm, I'm just a little concerned with his amount of drainage experience.
I am too, I don't think, maybe he just hasn't done it long enough?
Yeah, yeah, and, and he, he was, became IDDA's drainage attorney, I, what I've been told is because he and John Torbert were good friends... Uh, what I've been told is because he and John Torbert were good friends, and he's a good attorney, absolutely a good attorney, um, but just limited experience in the drainage part of it, so.
Right, and that's obviously all we deal with. You want someone with as much experience in it as possible.
Yeah, so I guess I'm looking if, for a recommendation if I should call an attorney or two, um, to get opinions on this driveway pipe, cause we should try and get something in the next few days, because...
You mentioned a couple real...
Yeah, I think we need to find out a ruling on it or...
Yeah.
Okay.
Before we tear it out.
Yeah, yeah, cause I wanna, I wanna get that opinion and I wanna...
I would think an easier solution to tear it out would be just lay another pipe beside it lower, smaller one that takes the low flow, and then the big one takes the high flow.
That can work, and it might in this case, but when you're talking a smaller one, you're probably talking at least a forty-eight inch.
Yeah.
Um...
Minimum, probably forty-eight.
Yeah, 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 just because...
But for the farmer, it'd be cheaper putting that in than putting in another eighty.
True, true. Now, here's the other option with this. There's only, he does have a piece of landlocked ground across the dredge ditch. It's like fifteen acres. And what the discussion in the office was, well, and I brought this up in the office, maybe he could sell it to the people that own the ground on the other side of the ditch with him, um, because he's gonna have a significant expense to put in another pipe. So would he be better off to let those fifteen acres go to somebody else or not? I have not called him. I will be calling him. It's John Opheim?
Yeah.
Okay, so, and I don't know his feelings or neighbor's situation or any of that, but that's, that's an, an option that I'd like him to at least have in his mind to think about.
Yeah, it'd be something to think about.
Yeah.
Cause like you say, it could be pretty expensive.
Yeah, well, the good thing also about your suggestion here is that they can just go on now and we can get arrangements made, or he can, Opheim, to have someone put in another pipe. Uh, they may have to do a little shaping above and below it to make it all work, but that's pretty inexpensive compared to a new ninety-inch pipe. Yeah, we'll look at the condition of that ninety. Some of those along there aren't in great condition either, and I do believe this one is the one that has back slope on it, but...
Slope the wrong way.
Yeah, slope the wrong way, but it, it still works, obviously, but it affects the capacity. That might mean the other pipe has to be a little bigger.
Yeah, cause after they cleaned it out, the pipe sits this much above the grade.
Yeah.
The bottom of the pipe.
I understand that, and yeah, this is a rough one. I mean, it's...
We're doing exactly what you said in O'Brien County on that one, where I said the contractor's gonna be finishing and coming over here. There was a sixty-inch pipe and we put a, a new forty-eight beside it, um, just for that very reason, that one, the old, the old one there was like almost concreted in, so rather than battle it, we just put in a new one beside it, so. It's a viable option and, and, yeah.
Well, so you're looking at getting a hold of the correct drainage attorney, just for the legality part of it?
Mm-hmm.
And then the options, and then visiting with the landowner?
Right, right.
Well, I'd say visit with them, it'd be funny. Well, I'm not telling you what to do, but if you have some of the cost of the options and the cost in general?
Yes, yes. We probably have something like for a forty-eight inch pipe, corrugated metal that we can give them some idea.
Something to the effect that make a decision, I mean, that's just pretty rough. You're talking about, you can't throw all this drainage stuff around frivolously.
Oh, no.
Because when you say, well, we might just, maybe you should just sell the fifteen acres. Well, you know, there might be the person out there that that makes sense.
Oh, yeah, there might be.
To both parties.
Yeah.
But then again, that can be, I don't care if it's five acres. That might be completely out of the question.
Oh, yeah, could easily be.
That might be, you're just not, that's just not gonna happen, but...
Yeah.
Is that the, the options?
I'd like to have three or four options for them to think about.
Yeah.
The legality side. Yeah.
Again, I mean, obviously, this would be kind of a drainage district attorney's opinion, that they would know the ever cost share, you know, with the landowner, if...
Counties have, um, again, the, most attorneys will say you can do that, it's wrong, but you can do that, yeah.
I mean, the law basically says you can tear it out, but you don't have to put it back in.
Right.
So, you know, that's a rough deal.
Mm-hmm, it is. And the discussions have included talking about, well, at one time, they were paid a severance because they, this ditch went through their property. Well, yeah, that was probably in nineteen-ten and it was...
Right.
Twenty-five dollars or whatever. I mean, it was next to nothing.
Nothing compared to what it costs now to move a drainage.
Yeah, it's scary cost now.
Well, I just think the options, the legal opinions...
Yep.
You just have to kinda go that route.
Yep.
But it does need to be corrected.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it's gonna affect the flows, yeah. You know, I think of three options immediately. Take out the one that's there and reinstall it lower, add a new pipe, sell the land. I'll probably think of two or three more.
And like Rick said, maybe leave that there, put one lower that's adequate for that flow.
There you go, yeah.
All these options, cause you don't know for certain that the one that, you know, you couldn't get it out without damaging it, re-upping.
Right, but chances are, I mean, the, the guy there doing the work, his boy says that's tough, to take it out, lower it without kinking a little bit, and once you kink, those steel pipes, they collapse.
And then even if you didn't damage it, how is that pipe? And shouldn't it be replaced anyway if you're gonna start?
And I would have it squashed down a little, you know, but this...
Shouldn't it be replaced anyway if you're fiddling with it, even if you don't damage it for a minute?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, this would be the time, so...
And maybe if, once I call the landowner, maybe I can meet him out there sometime here and just look at it physically.
Yeah, I mean, visually, you know, you look at it, you see it's high.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I mean, but then, there again, and I hope you'll do this, have the very close estimate.
Yes.
Dollar wise and optional wise when you need it.
Yes, yes.
This is where they're right up against now, isn't it?
Yes, you're right, yes. Yeah, they're right to it, they just dug just a little bit in the other side of it so far, just small, small amount, so.
And then the other side, the water ran backwards through it.
Yeah.
Cause of the slope of the pipes backwards.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, it's just one of those other wonderful things about range. If it isn't one thing, it's gonna be something else, and it might be something you haven't even thought of yet.
Oh, yeah, I, I still get surprised as if doing it thirty years.
This is, you know, I mean, it's understandable, but, yeah, so you can work through this.
Yes, absolutely. I've got his name. We went, I had one of my people find the address and name for him, and, uh, yeah, we'll be talking.
And obviously, this is fairly expedited. You gotta be fairly expedited because you're cleaning out the ditch.
Exactly, exactly, yeah. We'll, we'll definitely have contacts made this week.
Try to get us an answer fairly soon.
Yes, yep, absolutely will.
Okay.
Two lateral, um, when we, um...
Oh, the contract?
... recorded the bid, doesn't it sign it?
Yeah, I need to get this signed, okay.
Oh, I was just gonna tell you, when I met with Pat Hill and Brent Keenest last week, we also did our initial contact, uh, and review for DD thirty-three, Branch D, your Holland project. Um, and what we, I'll just give you a quick general description of what we've done so far. The, there's considerable amount of surface water that gets from the upper end of Branch E over to Branch D. Williams Brothers take a lot of surface water from Branch E. What we've done so far is, um, the, we have assessed the upper part of E some costs for D, because D was built to handle their surface water. So we are reclassifying Branch D and Branch E because the people in the upper end of E, because we're charging them for part of D, we're reducing what they're paying towards E, because E doesn't have to handle their surface water anymore, and it never really has. They're still gonna pay, everybody's gonna pay for the tile, but the upper end of E will pay less than the lower end because their surface water goes somewhere else. So it's very, it's kinda weird, I guess I'd say, but...
This is on...
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, our favorite project.
Yeah.
So you are working, you're just on the reclassification?
Just the reclassification, and we'll be meeting again in the next two or three weeks to try and finalize that reclassification, so then we'll, we'll be asking you to set hearing date.
Attorneys argue different ways?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that, I guess I call it, the, look at it as a gray area. Can you assess someone, well...
You have to take their water, but it doesn't say you don't have to charge them or...
Right, right.
So, what did just, looking at this and this reclassification and this whole project, when did this start? I mean, when did...
Well, it wasn't that long ago, just a few weeks ago, you authorized us to do that reclassification. Um, there was a discussion about having us do it for a long time, but the action, actually appointing us was fairly recent. So we, we've made the adjustments we think should be done as far as reduction of E for the tile, adding them to the, helping pay for D. We've got all that put together, just needs to be final review by the commissioners before we submit it. So it's been going on a while.
So this, that'll affect the, uh, obviously, classification, reclassification of that project and the levy.
People in, yes, people in...
They'll get levy down.
Yes, people in D and E will have to be notified for the reclassification because they're all affected.
I want to back and drag that.
That should take that long?
I just, I hope to meet and finalize the report in the next couple of weeks and then you have forty days.
There again, getting back to our levy.
I'll get levy down in March.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, I mean, that's not quite done either, that's a lot of these projects, but, okay, so this isn't gonna throw wrench into that. It should get, should make things, the purpose of all this is to make it more equitable, correct?
Right, exactly. That's the whole thing. The people that are draining water onto the Williams properties from E will be helping to relieve that flow, so. And with the grant money and things and the number of people it's spread over, I, I don't believe the assessments are gonna be too bad, but we'll, we'll know more when we put a number on it.
Good.
I hate glasses.
Gotta have them to read.
They're heated.
I know, they're always dirty and they're, yeah.
Get some lens cleaners right back.
I, I have some, but I just...
I use them religiously.
Okay, I should, and that's probably good.
Cause they're real, Stephen Morris, if they're dirty, it's like...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I think I have glaucoma sometimes.
Oh, it gives me a bad time about needing so much light to read. Well, yeah, I do.
Yeah, that's, that's just the way it is.
Yeah, she can read in practically blackout.
That's not good.
No.
Okay, that, uh, that figured out.
I think, I hope that's it. I've gone through my entire list, so. If you think of something, boy, don't hesitate to call. I mean, we're not that far away, I get down here, use the...
We have a lot enough to think about, and you've got a lot enough to do, and just have to get through it.
Yeah, there you go.
Can I get a motion to do a green?
Well, this is a...
Oh, something else?
We don't need to vote on this, I just wanna mention, well, Trish is here. Okay, all these, okay. On, this is an existing work order that was followed up on, uh, nothing to do with Brad, but I don't think, uh, it's, um, pursue joint number two, district, what's a couche to section four?
Yeah.
And made the determination that tile is parked shot for, I don't have a definite footage, thousand foot, throwing out a number for over maybe. And, uh, it was Doug Marshall's work order. I was out there in conjunction with another one, but this was a separate. So looked at it with landowner, with Doug, and dug up enough to determine that, but thousand, twelve hundred foot, and it does go through a permanent prairie, and it was not, I mean, it's old clay tile, it's just shot. Uh, good, either end where they did their investigating, so that thousand, twelve hundred foot, the decision was made to replace that with new wall plastic, non-concreted tiles.
Runs out of it.
To fix the problem. Been about a five-year ongoing thing to make that determination. It's, there again, I don't know what the magic number is on midletting, it's way under, is it fifty thousand?
Yeah.
It's way under that, but estimated cost, just if you wanna know, twenty to thirty. I mean, it's twenty-four, no, twelve inch, but the length of it and the digging and installation and, because the tile, it has to be put right back, so it's gotta be, the old clay stuff's gotta be taken out and dealt with, removed, replaced with the new, don't affect it, but...
Of when you have to notify them, doesn't it?
Over fifty thousand, you have to have a public hearing on it.
No, or if you upsize the pipe.
Yeah, yeah, improvement, if it's an, yeah, it's an improvement.
Over a certain amount, you had to notify them, but there was no cause for preliminary engineering or...
I think that's a fifty thousand figure.
Is it fifty?
I think, that's been updated in the last year or so.
But I just wanna...
Why don't we check that out with...
Cause I don't wanna...
Well, they're moving forward with this, because it is, you know, they're not up sizing the pipe, it's not gonna be over where you need midletting and engineering and all that. It's pretty straightforward. It just, I'm bringing it to your attention, cause it's not a five thousand dollar fix, it's, uh, you know, just a bit of an involved...
Now, they got this prairie potholes thing that they're going through, they got permission to go through that, um, wherever?
Yeah, well, it's, it's a land, it's a...
Is it private land or is it...
Private, it's not, it's not federal government, county, nothing, not, not where this fixes. But it affects, obviously, this whole district, and it's been, you know, everything is pretty well known about the, the district involved and the tile line involved and everything, and this is the culprit, you know, this is the spot that they had suspicions and they finally confirmed all their suspicions and got it down to what it's gonna take to fix it, and they said, well, let's just go ahead and fix it, means everybody's on board, yes.
Is this the same work order that was requested then?
It's the same, basically, continuation of, on that, yeah, there was an existing work order for Doug Marshall.
That you requested a work order?
No, this is, well, no, this was on the books.
Okay, so there's two?
I know, that, I can tell you about that one, too, what they did in the others, uh, same district, different sub-whatever thing, where they cleaned out the tile. This is not the same tile. The one that was on your desk for the water jet, exploration of the...
Order H K two on the big water jet.
Was that H K two, yes, but it's different, you know, area. So that was, and that really worked out really well. So that, there was a work order to inspect it, or work order for Doug, he went out, dug up, the decision was made, uh, with notifications, cause the colony, we did everything we possibly could to inspect it, found it's got roots, it's got dirt, get the water jetting, same guy as a water jetting guy went in and cleaned that across the affected area, which is basically a CRP field, and it worked really well. I mean, it, it really got rid of a lot of, don't, should, uh, put that back to its, the tile back to its capability. It could, it slashed capacity.
Yeah.
But what section is that in though?
That's actually in pursuit county.
That's in pursuit, did that happen then?
Yeah, that's, yeah, but... So the one that you got when you were gone last week that's for that, so that was, the work order was there to dig it up and look at it, then additional work order was put in for the company that inspected it and cleaned it. So that's also a work order thing, but that worked, that's done, and that worked really well for what they had to work with. And it opened up a lot of good discussion for the parties involved in that drainage district to start thinking about a new tile project. So it was pretty darn successful there. This other one is in, still a joint district, different location, different tile line, uh, it's gotta be on Brad Bannister, yes, it's private, it's just permanent prairie, Top, you know, Brad Bannister, yes, it's private, it's just permanent prairie, and that's what I wanted to do. But that has an existing work order, it's Doug Marsole, he's doing the work, but we don't need additional, it's just going to be an expensive fix. So, that's drainage, there you go.
That reminded me, DD 38, east of Rutland, that's where Marsole had dug up and they hadn't find, found the connection, and it's in the trees and the trail. We came down, got the ground elevations, put a straight grade on it, that ended up with deep cut. Doug asked us to rework the grade, and we, basically from going, starting at the main, we came up fairly quickly and then did it more level going to where we connect, and that ended up getting the whole thing about ten feet deep instead of having some about fourteen. So, that helped, and we remarked the stakes to do that. So, I don't know what day he's doing that, but it won't take him long, it's less than a thousand feet, so, that's...
Was that a, just to, you know, get your mind around all this drainage stuff, was that such an expensive project that you guys really needed to get involved, or was it just you helping? I know they had a hard time finding that, but they did, and they, you just said they figured out how to do it. That isn't a fifty thousand dollar...
No, it was way under that, yeah, yeah.
So, you were just...
We were consulted to help try and figure out what was going on.
Go up and level it out to still get the correct connections.
Yeah, there you go, yeah, to have enough slope on the flatter ones to still meet the capacities.
So, that, that was basically a fix to...
Yes.
I'm sure it didn't cost a whole lot for the engineering, but...
Oh, no, no.
Ended up, it's going to be kind of an expensive fix.
It's a, it's a repair by replacement, yeah.
And that's what this one is, same thing, but it's not, you know, where you're bidding at, where you have to get...
Right.
You know, and you didn't, this is real straightforward, but... So, it's a continuation of the work order, I just want everybody to know, it's kind of an expensive...
I'll verify, but I'm pretty sure it's over fifty thousand, you can still hire someone, but you have to have a, a hearing, or you have to give notice and have a meeting, and if it's over a hundred, I think it is, that you have to get bids, competitive bids, so, we'll look at that, I'll look...
We need to check that sometime.
Yeah, I've got the manual with me that tells me, so, what that change was. Thank you.
All right.
I think so, sorry.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
There are the greenage, back to general session.
Ten minute recess?
Yep. Turn it off, okay. I got in trouble messing with it.